Silakan kepada Bapak Yahyaz Khalil Stakub untuk menyampaikan Welcoming remarks.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Alhamdulillah wa syukrullahu sholatu salamu ala rasulillah. Si Dinamulana Muhammad Dinibnabillah. Wa ala alihi washabihum waala. Para hadirin, para pembicara dan para partisipan yang saya hormati, saya akan menyampaikan pidato dalam bahasa Indonesia. Setelah berabad-abad sejarah beradaban umat manusia, setelah sekian lama sejarah yang diwarnai dengan kesulitan-kesulitan, keadaan-keadaan yang sulit di dalam hubungan antar umat beragama. Hari ini kita masih mewarisi realitas kenyataan bahwa berbagai macam kelompok dari latar belakang agama dan keyakinan yang berbeda-beda masih terlibat dalam pertentangan antagonisme, konflik yang didasarkan pada motivasi- motivasi keagamaan. Sampai hari ini kita masih melihat kenyataan-kenyataan yang memprihatinkan di berbagai belahan dunia, di Afrika Barat, di Asia Selatan, di Asia Tenggara, di Eropa bahkan dan Amerika dan seluruh belahan dunia. Kita seolah-olah mewarisi suatu keadaan saling kunci, gridlocks karena pengalaman-pengalaman yang bermasalah di masa lalu di dalam hubungan antar komunitas beragama. Pengalaman yang sulit terkait dengan pertentangan antagonisme dan konflik itu berlangsung begitu lamanya, sehingga seolah-olah mengendap menjadi kemapanan dari pola hubungan di antara umat beragama dalam waktu yang begitu panjang. Dan di dalam kemapanan itu konflik, antagonisme bahkan kemudian merembes ke dalam persepsi umat beragama tentang ajaran agamanya masing-masing. Kita tidak perlu mengingkari bahwa bagi sementara kelompok umat beragama, wawasan keagamaan berdasarkan pemahaman tentang ajaran agama masing-masing, masih juga mengandung elemen-elemen, mengandung unsur-unsur yang dapat dijadikan pembenaran bagi konflik, pembenaran bagi pertentangan berhadapan dengan kelompok yang dianggap berbeda. Kita semua, para pemimpin dari umat beragama di seluruh dunia perlu mengambil tanggung jawab untuk mencari jalan keluar dari keadaan ini. Kita perlu melakukan upaya-upaya untuk mengurai keadaan saling kunci, mengurai gridlocks ini. Karena gridlocks inilah yang terus-menerus menjadi api dalam sekam, sehingga dimanapun dan kapanpun muncul suatu dorongan untuk munculnya pertentangan di antara kelompok agama yang berbeda. Unsur-unsur di dalam wawasan keagamaan masih dengan mudah bisa dipergunakan untuk mendorong hubungan yang semakin memburuk di antara kelompok agama yang berbeda-beda. Maka kita perlu bersama-sama berupaya agar potensi konflik yang dirujukan kepada pemahaman dan wawasan keagamaan ini segera berakhir. Kita perlu membangun upaya bersama dengan pertama-tama mengidentifikasi dan menyepakati nilai-nilai apa saja yang kita semua sudah saling berbagi. Kita semua sama-sama memegangi sebagai nilai bersama di antara agama-agama yang berbeda. Ini akan menjadi rujukan dasar bagi kita semua untuk berjuang bersama, menjadi alasan bagi kita semua untuk bekerja sama karena kita memiliki nilai-nilai bersama yang kita sepakati bersama. Tapi kita tahu dan tidak perlu mengingkari bahwa masih ada karena kita memang berangkat dari sistem nilai yang berbeda-beda. Masih ada unsur-unsur di dalam sistem nilai masing-masing agama yang mungkin-mungkin bisa digunakan sebagai pembenar untuk hubungan yang antagonis di antara umat yang berbeda agama. Maka kita perlu berpikir tentang nilai-nilai apa saja yang perlu kita pegangi bersama, yang kita butuh berbagi di antara kita supaya kita bisa meneruskan hidup saling berdampingan secara damai tanpa terus-menerus dibayang-bayangi oleh potensi konflik hanya karena ada rujukan-rujukan di dalam unsur-unsur wawasan keagamaan kita yang bisa digunakan untuk mendorong antagonisme dan konflik. Maka apabila mana perlu masing-masing komunitas beragama perlu mengupayakan suatu peninjauan ulang terhadap wawasan keagamaan di lingkungan agama masing-masing. Dan apabila di dalam wawasan keagamaan itu masih terdapat unsur-unsur yang bisa menghalangi koexistensi damai di antara kelompok agama yang berbeda, kita harus memiliki keberanian untuk memikirkan interpretasi-interpretasi baru terhadap wawasan keagamaan ini agar hidup berdampingan secara damai lebih memungkinkan bagi kita semua. Gereja Katolik sudah pernah melakukan itu. Di dalam patikan kedua dihasilkan keputusan-keputusan keagamaan yang mendorong umat Katolik untuk bisa lebih menghargai kelompok dari agama yang berbeda dan lebih mampu untuk menerima kehidupan bersama tanpa pertentangan. Kita juga mengetahui bahwa belum lama ini pada tahun 2016 satu komunitas Yahudi yaitu Yahudi Mahsorti telah menyelenggarakan satu forum di antara para rabbi dan menghasilkan satu dokumen yang sangat inspiratif bagi kita semua dalam hal menjamin hubungan yang lebih baik dan lebih harmonis di antara umat beragama yaitu keputusan yang kemudian disebut sebagai documented sufa yang dengan jujur dan berani melihat ke dalam wawasan keagamaan Judaisma atau Yahudi untuk mendorong agar faham Judaisma ini dikembangkan dengan wawasan yang lebih menerima penghargaan atas kesetaraan umat manusia dan harmoni di antara kelompok-kelompok yang berbeda. Demikian juga Nahdlatul Ulama pada tahun 2019 yang lalu kami menyelenggarakan satu konferensi nasional ulama-ulama Nahdlatul Ulama di Jawa Barat Indonesia. Dan sebagai hasil dari Konferensi Nasional Ulama tersebut disepakati suatu wawasan yang merupakan rekontekstualisasi dari pemahaman tentang ajaran-ajaran Islam dengan menyatakan bahwa kategori non muslim, kategori kafir, kategori infidel tidak lagi relevan dalam konteks negara bangsa modern. Karena setiap warga negara harus setara di depan hukum. Perbedaan latar belakang apapun termasuk perbedaan latar belakang agama tidak boleh dijadikan alasan untuk diskriminasi dalam bentuk apapun juga. Ini semua adalah upaya-upaya yang sudah dilakukan di antara berbagai komunitas agama yang berbeda-beda. Kita ingin membawa semangat ini untuk menjadi semangat yang lebih luas secara universal mengajak seluruh komunitas beragama secara global untuk ikut di dalam semangat ini membangun gerakan bersama untuk mengakhiri potensi antagonisme dan konflik di antara komunitas-komunitas beragama. Apabila kita berhasil mencapai ini maka agama-agama akan berada, akan meraih posisi moral yang kuat untuk menyeru kepada seluruh dunia, menyeru kepada kemanusiaan untuk menerima rujukan-rujukan nilai-nilai spiritual, nilai-nilai moral, nilai-nilai mulia dari agama-agama agar dimasukkan, agar dirembeskan agar di adopsi di dalam dinamika pergulatan bangsa-bangsa, dinamika global baik dalam struktur ekonomi global maupun dalam struktur politik global agar kita semua, seluruh kemanusiaan kemudian bergerak bersama-sama menuju masa depan yang mulia bagi semua orang. Apakah ini mungkin? Bapak ibu sekalian yang saya hormati lebih 77 tahun yang lalu di Jakarta tokoh-tokoh pemimpin-pemimpin dari berbagai kelompok dengan spektrum perbedaan yang sangat luas. Pemimpin-pemimpin dari berbagai kelompok mulai dari pemimpin dari kelompok Islamis sampai pemimpin-pemimpin komunis. Pemimpin-pemimpin dari kelompok yang mengikuti liberalisme barat sampai yang menuntut kepada rujukan kepada tradisionalisme Indonesia. Semua pemimpin-pemimpin dari semua agama besar yang ada di dunia, di dunia berkumpul dan harus berembuk di antara mereka untuk mencapai satu kesepakatan yang bisa menjadi dasar bagi semua orang yang berbeda-beda di Indonesia ini untuk hidup bersama sebagai satu bangsa. Dan para pemimpin itu berhasil mengunduh nilai-nilai paling mulia dari setiap latar belakang agama, kepercayaan dan keyakinan mereka termasuk latar belakang idologi mereka, nilai-nilai yang paling mulia untuk bisa diterima bersama. Sehingga lahirlah Pancasila sehingga lahirlah undang-undang dasar 1945 dengan pembukaannya yang mencita-citakan peradaban yang lebih mulia bagi masa depan seluruh umat manusia. Ini adalah contoh bahwa sebesar apapun perbedaan di antara kita kesepakatan bersama selalu mungkin. Marilah dengan semangat yang kita lihat dan kita rasakan sudah merupakan semangat bersama di antara kita semua ini kita lanjutkan dengan diskusi yang jujur, diskusi yang terus terang. Tidak perlu ada yang kita khawatirkan karena kita ada di sini untuk menerima dan memaklumi perbedaan. Kita tidak akan saling menyalahkan, tidak perlu saling merendahkan. Kita tahu sejak awal bahwa kita datang dalam keadaan berbeda-beda. Mari kita akui perbedaan-perbedaan kita. Mari kita akui masalah-masalah yang selama ini telah menimpa kita bersama agar kita mampu melihat jalan keluar yang tepat, jalan keluar yang valid yang dapat menolong kita semua dan insya Allah akan menolong seluruh umat manusia. Bapak ibu sekalian yang saya hormati sekali lagi selamat datang, selamat berdiskusi. Kita adalah umat yang beriman, kita percaya kepada Tuhan, kita percaya kepada rahmat dan berkat dari Tuhan. Semoga Tuhan senantiasa membimbing kita melindungi kita dan mengarahkan kita kepada upaya-upaya yang bermanfaat untuk umat manusia. Terima kasih. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullah wabarakatuh.
Thank you Bapak Yahyaz Khalil Stakub for your welcoming remarks. Ladies and gentlemen, before we proceed to our next presentation we would have a video greetings from His Excellency Prabowo Subianto, Ministry of Defense of the Republic of Indonesia.
I would like to congratulate the organizers and the sponsors of the R20 activities which is part of the G20 events in Bali and Indonesia November 2022. With harmony, with understanding and with interfaith cooperation we could achieve great strides in maintaining global peace and global harmony which is essential for prosperity and the well-being of mankind. Thank you very much.
Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen now we would have a speech by His Holiness Pope Francis Supreme Pontiff of the Roman Catholic Church Vatican will be represented by Apostolic Nunzio Arc Bishop Piero Piopo for 15 minutes speech. Please welcome Apostolic Nunzio Arc Bishop Piero Piopo.
Your excellencies, distinguished authorities, parasaudara dan saudari, dear friends I have the honor to read the message that His Holiness, our beloved Pope Francis wrote personally to this R20 religious forum to the participants in the G20 religious forum R20 Bali Indonesia. Dear brothers and sisters, I offer my cordial greetings to all taking part in the G20 religious forum and I express my gratitude to those who have organized this event. The meeting in Bali which precedes the G20 summit provides a fitting opportunity to reflect together as religious leaders and representatives on certain pressing issues and needs of our time. Prominent among these is the question of the role religions can play in finding solutions to the crises that nowadays affect not only individuals but also entire peoples, countries and the international community. For amid a globalized society the great religious and wisdom tradition are called to testify to the existence of a shared spiritual and moral patrimony based on two principles, transcendence and fraternity. To speak of transcendence reminds us that the highest human aspiration cannot be excluded from the public life and relegated merely to the private sphere. Men and women everywhere, though belonging to different cultures, languages, religious tradition ask the same and fundamental questions, who am I, where did I come? Why is there injustice, evil deaths in the world? What is there after this life? Faced with these questions, the world's religions call us to look beyond the delusion of our own self-sufficiency and raise our vision to what is above, to God who created us to be one human family and also offers life and hope to all. Sadly, the world is increasingly marked by the neglect of God and by abuses committed in his name. We must affirm that extremism, radicalism, terrorism and other incentives to hatred, hostility, violence and war, whatever their motivation or goals have nothing to do with the authentic spirit of religion and must be rejected in the most decisive terms possible. Instead, it is our responsibility as individual believers and all leaders of our respective communities to foster the path of mutual dialogue, love, reconciliation that lead to peace in conformity with the plan of the Almighty. In this regard religion far from being a cause of the various crises we face today is instead part of their solution. Let us then strive away to bear witness in daily life and concrete actions to the greatness of faith in God that unites divided hearts and elevates the human soul. At the same time however, we cannot profess genuine fidelity to God if we do not also show love to our neighbor in particular for the poor and the most vulnerable. Strengthening the bonds of fraternity, it is an essential contribution of religion to a healthy social fabric. In this regard, I encourage your effort to promote the integral human development of every man and woman defend their fundamental rights and dignity especially the sacred and inviolable character of human life at all its stages and contribute to the harmonious coexistence of all in the society. Likewise, all of us apart from the particular religion we profess have a moral obligation to care for the earth which is our common home preserving for both present and future generations the beauty of the divine gift of creation. In carrying out these responsibilities religious believers and leaders will greatly contribute to the building of a more fraternal, just and peaceful world. These two specific contributions the religion makes highlight all the more the indispensable role of interreligious dialogue in healing a wandered humanity shaping an ethic of concern for the earth and sowing seed of hope for better future. I trust therefore that your deliberations during the religious forum will in a spirit of mutual dialogue benefit the common good by recalling to men and women everywhere God's providential care for all that he has made and the need of to enhance the bonds of fraternal solidarity. In this way, your work can contribute to resolving the various crises that confront the human family and thus truly serve the good of our brothers and sisters. With these sentiments, I express once again my heartfelt gratitude and accompany you with my prayers. Upon each of you and your loved ones, I invoke the abundant blessing of the Most High given in Rome from Saint John Lethern, the 2nd of November 2022. Signed Francis Pope.
Yes Pope Francis, and now we would like to proceed to our next speaker. We would like to invite His Holiness Swami Sri Govinda Devgiri Maharaj Treasurer Sri Ram Janma Bhumit Trust from India. Please welcome.
Namaste to all all honorable, respected messengers of the immortal faith. I'm excited that we are meeting at a very proper moment of age when the world is expecting much, much from all the religious leaders. I'm coming from Bharat that is India and our Rishis have told that God And our Rishis have told that God sent his messengers to every country, to every part of the world. And the messengers of one God, they have taught the same values, very noble. And they have given light in those dark days to helping hand for the humanity for better future. For last some time, we see that religion which had been really expected to give solutions for human problems, some problems have been created in name of religions, not by religion, but in name of religions. And if we are to give the proper answer, the replies for these questions, the events like R twenty are expected more and more in future. I congratulate the people who have arranged this and really they have paved a very good way for better future of whole humanity. Really speaking, all religions have got essential similarities. And therefore, it's expected that the core of all religious faiths should be equal. There may be some differences which have got some cultural, some geographical reasons. But yet religions are meant for the brotherhood of man. If brotherhood of man is to be stamed, it can be only dreamt of by believing in the fatherhood of one God, one God. Since there is one God, we are naturally brothers and sisters. Though the geographical changes, some cultural, some historical problems might have shattered the real message, yet the message is true. And the message of religion is the message of brotherhood, fraternity, and mutual love. Really speaking, religious people, the religions, they are not expected to have enmity, any kind of enmity between us amongst us. If we are all facing one problem altogether, all faiths together are facing the problem of materialism today. The scientific development and the technological growth has led our young people to life of materialism, the carnal pleasures, and that have made them self-centered. And because of that, many noble thoughts are being disappeared from the minds of the coming generations. All of us are having, should have the mission to implant the ethical values which all religions have got, the conscience, the way of self-restraint. This we must give to next generation, that is the mission of us all together. We also have got one task, that the scientific development has polluted the whole environment. We must hand, we must come together and give shoulder to the mission for the protection of Mother Earth, because today the water, the earth, the air, all the elements are polluted. And it is the religious people, religious leaders, whose voice can be heard by the whole humanity in different areas, in different languages. And therefore, it is we people, not only the religious leaders, who can save Mother Earth from all this pollution. We must take it as our mission. And for that, we must have mutual dialogues. I'm coming from the land of Vedas and Bhagavan Adi Shankar Acharya. They talk of not only one family, vasudhahiva kutumbakam. You must have heard, the world is one family. It is from Vedas, it is from Yogavastha, it is from all of our saints. But they don't only say that the world is one family. They proclaim that the whole universe is one entity. We are inwardly one, one and one alone. And therefore, there is nothing like they and we, there is only us. And therefore, anything wrong done to anybody, by anybody, ultimately, it is done wrong to the doer only. And therefore, we must have this consciousness. If this consciousness comes, there shall be no disharmony at all. For the peace, for the harmony, and for the brotherhood of humanity, we must imbibe each other's thoughts also. All the scriptures have given noble thoughts, but we have closed our eyes, closed our ears to study each other's. In Vedas, they say, let all noble thoughts come to me from every corner of the world. Ano bhadraha katabo yantu visvataha, yantu visvataha. Let all noble thoughts from all messengers in all faiths, let them come to me. Let me imbibe them, let me practice them. Nobility coming from anybody, the thought of brotherhood coming from anybody, it is, it must be welcome, and we are welcoming it. Brothers, really speaking, I think the myths like R twenty, what far they are, I think this myth should prove, for the betterment of humanity, it should prove that R twenty meat is a melting pot of all religious faiths. A melting pot. All religious faiths must come together and with different languages, we should give the same message. The languages may be different, the words may be different, but the message must be one. And the message should be as we say in Sanskrit, sarve bhavantu sukhanaha, sarvesantu niramayaaha, sarve bhadrani pashantu ma kashchut dukkha bhag bhavay. Sarve bhadrani pashantu. Let all see good only in its future. Let all be happy, let all be healthy, and let all be totally devotional to the Almighty. The way the thought believes in the equilibrium, in the balance of the person, the society, the nature, and the ultimate God. This balance is called yoga, and today, when we come together, it is also called yoga. We are here to balance the religious thought of the world. We are here to balance the whole emotional world with our own cooperation. And for that, we should shake hands together, we should come together. Not only in the myths like R twenty, but also in our personal and social life, wherever we are. If we come together in our own places, if we come together and discuss all these things in our own places, these myths shall be fruitful, and they will create a new world. A new world which must be as or Saint Nanishwar Maharaj desired and prayed for the Lord. He said, "Oh Lord, give me a world in which everybody is basked in the total enlightenment, enlightenment, and mutual love, the world of love, the world of enlightenment, and the world of total fraternity, the world of oneness." This we can create. It is not only your prayer, it is not only your expectation. It is a mission for us all, and let us take it upon our shoulders and be prepared for that. Thank you, Om Shanti Shanti Shanti.
Thank you very much for His Holiness Swamisri Govinda Devgiri Maharaj, Treasurer Sri Ram Janma Bhumit Trust from India. Our next speaker will be His Excellency Sheikh Dr. Saukli Ibrahim Abdel Karim Alam, Grand Mufti of Egypt. We would like to invite Dr. Sheikh, Dr. Sauki Ibrahim to present his speech.
Salam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah. Wassalamu wassalamu ala sayyidina wa maulana Rasoolilah. Wa ala Rasoolilah ajma'in. Amma ba'at ayyuha sayyidat wa assada. Asma'hu lihi fi bila'ati hazi al-kalima. An atwaja bha'ahlis shukri wa taqdiri iladawla Indonesia. Raisa wa hukuma wa shaba. Aladawotihim al-kareemah. Luhudurihada al-likaa. Wa xusu shukr. Ashab al-maali. Sheikh Muftaa Al-Axiar. And Sheikh Yahi Khalil. Rasa'i nahda kibar nahda aulmaa Indonesia. Nasukruhum aladajhulihim al-mashkura al-majjura fil-aidadi wa-tartibi lahaza al-maphal al-kabiir. Wa xusu shukr kizaleka achi ma'ali Sheikh Abdul Krim, Mahamal bin Abdul Krim Al-Iesa. Al-amin il-aa'm lirabita al-alam islami. Linajtame'ama'na ala kalma sawa. Wa ajnda'm chtraka. Lema fiih calhul bilad wal-ibad. Kamau thaminu kizaleka ruiya najoogati ar-tuinti lita'idihi sala'mi al-alamii watawir al-hiraa al-hiwari bain al-hadharat. Waxad ahthah haza mentada. Bifadli hazi al-jehud namuzaja bariza. Li raf'gi mustawat tagawuni bain adba'al adiyan licalhul insaniya tijmiya. Ayuha iqwa al-keram. In al-mas'uliyat al-akhlaqiyah. Wal-diniyah. Al-mulkata al-a'atq al-qadat al-dinii. Fil-alam kuli tijaah qaziyat dami qiyam tagayush al-mchtraka. Bain al-adiyani. Hii mas'uliyat kabiirat. Waiya thqila fil-wakti nafseh. Lian al-qadat al-dinii. Al-achtilaaf adiyanim. Hum mahal bha'htiram wa taqdir. Min jami'i al-nasi bil-astisna. Wazalka nazra lima tachlaqubih. Min sumuhi al-hadafi wa raf'at al-ressalati. Watanzahu kizaleka an al-atumag al-siasiyat. Wal-duniyawia. Lim aqmahamullah subhana wa tagala fihi. Min mukam rafi'in lina'ri al-qi'mi wal-aklaq samiya bain al-nasi jami'ya. Lizaraka kan al-izama'na alayim. An yaqoodu masira al-aislah. Masira al-aislah al-khatab al-dinii. Wal-ibtigadi bihi gandairat al-adaii was-salaam. Al-ati tabannatha ba'bu al-guul al-muttarifa. Al-ati nazat ilan-ashri al-qi'mi shazza al-muchaddida. Al-ati tatanzahu anha jami'ul adiyan. W min ajli tahkiq hazi al-ga'at al-kareemah samiya. La'budah min tagawuni bain hawa'il qadah fil-alam kuli. Min ajli tohiij ruiya. Wata'idi l-wasaili minasiba. W kizaleka amal baramj madrosa wa manzama. Min ajli jami'ul qulub al-jamaahir al-gafira. Alanabzi al-ta'ssubi wanabzi al-ansuriya. W kizaleka al-budh an al-tameezi al-asas al-din. Wa qabla zarka kuli wa ba'da. La'budah min tarsihi thakafa qabooli al-akhar. Wa bha'htiram raihi wa atiqadi. Wa a'zal la'budah min tagawuni al-mustawa al-ilmii wal-akademii. Min ajli amal machroo'g ilmi. W kizaleka abhas al-ilmia tinasina. Ta'amaluk ala barwala hazi al-qi'mi. Fi sura al-ilmia sadiqah majada. Td'gamu bil-manhaj al-ilmii. Qiyam tagayush al-mchtrak. Al-ati dage itlaiha jami'ul adiyan. Ayuha iqwa al-hudur. Ina sabata al-qi'mi al-akhlaqiyah. Kfiil b-hafz al-amn wal-aman fil-majtama. Mahmah achta'fah al-aghaid. Wahmah achta'fah al-adiyan. W ayyu abas bil-manzuma al-akhlaqiyah. Al-ati tagaraf al-nasu aliha. Souf yuaddi ilan-awaq bakaithiya wa xima. W min huna fa'nahnu haqan. Fi hajja lita'idi l-ti'ka al-qi'mi. Wa tahuilha ilan-waq'im melmoos fi'asrin al-hadhar. Bada ma tafaqat. Makhaturu quwa shirira tuzaki nirana al-karahiya wal-ta'ssubi. Wal-shiqaq wal-taifiyah. Wal-tatref wal-irhab. W'ta'tli al-karamat insaniya. W min huna fa'innana a'huju ma'na kun. Ilan-jehd kabiir li-tarsihi al-qi'mi wal-aklaq. Wa qwa'adi al-zouqil-aa'm fil-majtamaati. Min khilal al-maasasat al-dinii. Wal-ailamii. Wal-ta'limii. Wal-fani. B-wasutet ijarai mubadaraat. Ta'fa'ju hazi al-qi'mi raqiyah. Hatta na'id al-karahiya. W'anhyi al-mahbata was-salaam. Inna fa'ihja l'an yata'wan al-ailamun al-mu'asir. Al-hubbi wal-ikhaa. Wa ala yata'wan alan-ashri al-karahiya wa izkai nar al-furqah. Nahnu fa'ihja ilan-yudarba. Ta'limun al-mu'asir. Al-tulabas si'garan wa kibaran. Alan-yatakafalu. W-yatakamalu. Fi'attfakihim. Wa achta'fihim a'zal. Fa'ihja ilan-yakun manthiku. Wa munthalqu d'ghaat hukuq al-insani fil-alam. Daghutum ilan-al-ina'iti bil-insani. Wa musanadati. Wa musanadatihi b-carf al-nazar. Al-aytibarat al-jinsi wal-lawni wal-din. Nahnu fa'ihja ilan-nazar bagain al-aytibar. Ilan-mchtrak al-insani. Min-nahya. Wa ilan-aytibar. Min na'hiya wa ilaa bha'alram al-xususiyat wa al-tanoga'at min na'hiya a'ra. Nahnu fa hajja ilaa an tanshura m'asasatunna salama wa al-mahbata wa al-hibar qaula wa f'ala bainha. Wa fi haza la'itar. Qad a'xe a'ulamau dini islami alaa gatikhim nashra sura al-sahihati ala islam. Wa alati na'mulu an ta'ati al-alam fahman afzala min fahman afzala ala m'badhi haza dini wa qi'mi a'laqiyah islamia. Wa inn hazi musharakah la'tati fi haza siyaq. Wa asma'hu li, ayewa ikhotul karam. Asma'hu li an a'kuul. Inn dar al-iftai al-masriya fi al-fetarat al-sabika. Qad sa'at bi chutan hasisa li jami'ul shamli wa t'wotid al-akhwa wa nabzi al-karahiya fi al-majal al-iftai. Fa'anshanna al-amanat al-aa'm laduri l'ha'iat al-iftai fi al-alam. Lina'tha'awra wa n'ta'awun alaa al-bri wa al-taqwa. Wa najma'ashamla al-muftina ala al-mahbata wa al-salam. Wa nabzi al-karahiya mahliya wa al-alamia. Wa'adha'ha dar al-iftai a'ja'lan. Wa al-amanat al-aa'm fi l'ha'iat wa dor al-iftai fi al-alam alaa trjama'ati hazi al-qi'mi fi fa'ali'tiha wa fata'wiha wa bayanatiha wa m'badaratih wa mu'tamratih al-alamia al-muttarifah. Wa'ansha'ti dar m'razidha. Wa'ansha'ti dar m'razidha al-muttarifah. Wa'adha'ha m'badaratih l'xidme'ah zal maqsid al-nabi. Fa'anshanna alaa sami'li misal. Marzada li fatawa al-karahiya. Alati yu'ha'ul al-muttarifun abashtaha fi al-alam. Wa yinsebunha zura wa m'ha'tana li dini islam. Wa'adha'ha haza marzad. Adha'knahu bi ism marzad al-fatawa al-takfiriyah wa al-shazza. Wazalka bil mu'azah. Ma' marzad a'har. Yar'sadu m'marasat al-karahiya fi sawbhi al-akhir. Fi sawbi al-karahiya li dini islam wa al-khof minh. Wa adha'kn alaihi marzad al-islamu phobia. Wa hua yu'nna b'ma yusma' bil karahiya dudza islam wa al-muslimina fi al-alam. Kamau adha'kn al-mu'ashir al-alam ilaa al-fatawa li qiyasi thimari al-wasatiya wa al-karahiya fi al-majal al-iftai. Wa'adha'ha kullu min al-marzadini. Wa al-mu'ashir uku'luh tyaiba khilal fetrat al-alam al-sabika. W'tujat hazi juhud bi inshaa'i merkzi salam li dirasat al-tawruf. Al-zi ysa'ha an yu'ka'm m'zalla jamiga li kli m'arkit al-abhasi al-magniya bi m'kafahat al-tawruf wa iqaya wa ilaja. La'shaka annan fa hazi m'badarat. Wa bil idza'fa ilaa niyat al-tyaiba min huna wa hnaak. Nahnu n'chajju ilaa menahija ta'lim. Ilaa menahija ta'lim musanida wa menabir a'lam m'ina. Wa anta tabanna, kullu zara'ka anta tabanna al-alam bi nataj hazi m'badarat. Ba' yatabanna'ha al-majtama' bi kli m'asasati al-hukumiyah wa al-madaniya li kay t'smir al-thamra ta'marjua. Asada'ul karam. Innahu m'ma yatibu li fi naha'ati kalmate. An a'shukrukum jami'aa. Alaa hazi dagwat al-tyaiba. Wa la'ysa'uni fi haza al-makam illa an a'ru'u Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Wa atwajhu dar'ha'ana ilaihi. An yu'inana alaa ala nashri thakafa tagayush wa al-amin wa al-salam bain abnail insaniyyati jami'aa. Wa an yu'kuwi Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala azmana fi a'tlaf juzur al-ta'zbi wa al-tshaddud wa al-gunfi min a'qul abnainan jami'aa. Min kli dini wa taifah. Fa al-insaniyyatu bi hajja ilaa la'ishii fi amni wa salami wa ta'awun li kay yu'ma al-khyiru alaa jami'i. Wa Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala mu'afiq. Wa hua la'adi ilaa sawa'is sabil. Wa a'hir dagwanan al-hamdu'llah, Robb al-alamin. Wa shukran lakum, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Wa alhamdu'llah, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you for His Excellency Sheikh Dr. Saukli Ibrahim Abdel Karim Alam, Grand Mufti of Egypt. Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Now we will have a video speech presented by His Excellency Sheikh Abdullah bin Al-Mahfud bin Baya, Chairman of the Emirates Council for Fatwa from Mauritania United Arab Emirates.
Excuse me, the program was not updated. Sheikh bin Baya was unable to make it to join us. And so we will be followed by Reverend Miyaki from Japan.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Alhamdulillah, Robb al-alamin. Wassalatu wa assalamu ala sayyidina Muhammed bin Nabi al-�atin. Wa ala ikhotuhum ilaa al-amina wa al-mu'sadu. Ashhab al-maali wa al-fadila. Sheikh Doktor Muhammad bin Abdul Krim Al-Isa. Al-amini al-aa'm lirabitat al-alam islam. Ra'isu ha'aiti a'ulamai al-muslimina. Al-m'akka'ti arab, al-m'akka'ti arab, al-ji'ti sa'ud. Fadila Sheikh Doktor Yahi Khalil Stabuh. Ra'isu mu'asif li murtaq al-adiyan. Zomima'ati al-ajrin. Ra'isu m'jar'iyati nahdati a'ulama. Fi hori'ti al-din. Ashhab al-maali wa al-sa'da. Ashhab al-samahat wa al-fadila. Ashhab al-m'adita wa al-din. Ayewa musharikun la'kullu bi ismini wa jami'ri wa ismini. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Yatibu li an atwaja ilaa mun'humin haa'ay al-murtaqal jali. Bi jaziri shukri alaa dagwatii li haa'ay ala likaar. Ma' al-aitdari ala mi t'makun min al-hudur magkum. M'ba'shara'ta li guruf sahiiya. Lakim, ala yudruk kullu, ala yudruk kullu. Asma'hu li b'ina'aidi haa'ay irzati an mu'dimabaz al-bkari's sari'a. Alati yarshu an ta'ka'm ishami bil taqdir fi al-m'adur m'ni'ah. Mu'tamri wa men'talqai al-hibari hou'yu. Kamau la'yfutu ri'um wa utray haa'ay kalmetan un'ubha'ha bil juhud jalila. Alati ta'kuun bih wa alaiha rabitat al-alam islam. Fa qiyadati ma'ali. Ashhab al-fadila. Sheikh Doktor Muhammad bin Abdul Krim Al-Isa. Fi nashri qiyabi t'samuh wa al-ta'awush fi arzai al-alam. W'tilaqal al-ibadi wa dhiqua m'akka'ti mukraba tari'ah. Wa a'ja'lan w'drhi kaza'ika alaa juhud m'jar'iyati nahdati a'ulama. Bi r'asati fadila Sheikh Yahi Khalil Stabuh. Haa'ay irzati al-ra'ida'ati ta'giziiz silbi al-ahli. Wa qiyam al-aitdari wa mahbata dakhri'ah in denusa'ah wa khadushah. Ayewa ikhotu wa al-axawat. Alati haa'ay al-mu'tamru fi wad'ay al-dorim wa al-talib. Yiddu mustawat ta'hadiyati alati t'wajju b'ashar. Min ta'hadiyati azmat sahiiya alati la'tzadu t'qibinu ilaa liha'ala a'jzaym al-alam. Ilaa ta'hadiyati ekzadik wa t'daxhum. La y'tshadu al-aswaq al-alam. Ilaa ta'hadi amni wa xatli al-hurub. Wa t'watturat al-hausilati huma'atika al-alam. Qad akketa'at al-azmat al-rahinat wa t'watturat al-hausilah. An nafsilma kullu la y'tshadz. Wa anna yu'ya'xhalim bih fi bin'taqat in al-alam. Tan'akis a'tarha'ala b'asharika bi kli bakha. Fa al-hurub fi haa'ay al-zabani la t'qif a'tarha'ala g'da'fudud jurafiyah. Li baydari magraka. Fa t'ta'adha'ala ilaa ba'yi asqai al-alam. Kamau b'yerati hau'ud da'ira ta'halaya. Fi a'jzaym al-alam. Inn sh'atina al-hurub ma t'zadu kamina fi al-nufus. Wa lida'fa innan mushuliyata qiyadati dini. Kamau kamau rijal al-sidasati. Mu'arajat haa'ay al-ikari fi al-nufus. Wa al-athani qabla' an t'haru ilal-ayya.
ودوائر تهيرنا نُسِم في استعادة الضمير الأخلاقي للإنسانية ليعيد الفاعلية لقيَّم الرحمة والعوَث ومعاني التعاون والأساء لا شكرنا لغشة التشابك بين مصاير الشروق وضاعها بالسياق العُلبة المعاصرة بهرضة السعورة الواعية لحققت الامتماء البشرية تعائلة كبرى وللأرض كوطن عش وهو ما يسمي بعض مواطلاً كونجياً مطلوب تحقيق بها من خلال تجديد روح ركاب السفينة التي ضرب بها النبي صل الله عليه وسلم مثلاً في الحديث الصحيح روح ركاب السفينة التي نؤمن بها بالمسؤولية المجتركة وبالحرية المسؤولية المرشدة وبواجب التضامن والتعال بروح ركاب السفينة مشيد عالما تضابهر فيه ثمرات العقول لفائدة الجميع فلا يستئه بها القوي ويحتكرها الغالي عالما تتلافس فيه الأمام والخير ولكل موجود هو مولها فاستبق الخيرات إلى الله باربكم جميعاً كما قال ربنا عز وجل في كتابه العزيز عالما تستبق فيه الدول في تقديم الضجابة التي تستريد إلى الكرامة للإنسانية والتي تجعلك ترى الغريبة قريباً تراه أخماً صدق فقابله بحسن الظن توهيه إلى بيتك وتبدله ببرة والأساء من غير السابق مع ركبتكم أيها الحضور الكريم قد برز دور القيادات الدينية بالقول لها في الآخيرة خيال عملها الدؤوم لإيجاد فرصة للسلام وذلك من خلال جهود نوارية وعملية أما النوارية منها فيتعلق بتكيذ دعوة الدين إلى السلام وأن الدين في أصله دعوتته بالسلمة وهذا يستطع الرد على النواريات التي تعتبر أن السلام لا يمكن أن يكون دائماً مستمر إلى باستعاده الدين من الحياة العامة وتربطوا بشكل ثقائي بين الدين والعم ليكون ذلك أساسًا لدعوته للمفاصلات بين الدين والدنيا كحل واحد لأوصى إلى سلامة التسامح والتعال وشيل مستقب لكن الحروب في القرن الآخر عن الأقل وبخاصته الحرب للعالمية الأولى والثانية يمتق الدينية ونطلق الدين كما أن الحروب الدائرة الآن ليست حروب الدينية بل كانت حروب стрاتجية حروب نفوس تعيد توزيع المشالات والفضاءات وترسم الخرايا طيب والدي تقسيم الأسواق وتحدد طرايق المبادلات والمواصلات هكذا قابلت القيادات الدينية المختلف الأديان بجهود تبرهن على أن الدين قوة سلام من خلال العودة إلى النصوصهم المقدسة ليستهيرها وإلى تراتهم الماضي ليستبدوا منه الأصوص المتينة للتسامح والتعال ويستهم النماج المضيئة التي يُشموا احياءها في الرسائل من خير والسلام في نفوس مغترق الديانات لأنه بالرجوع إلى النصوص وإلى التويل المناسب والمقارب ممكن أن تتصدي لمرابهية كراهية والعم كمن تهضت هذه القيادات في آية نفسه لتشفي عن المشتركات بينها لتستبعد الحروب وصيدامك فيما بينها تلك المشتركات التي تتصون كرامة الإساء وترفعوا من شنف من خيائ العناية المان بسميه بالإسلام بالكليات الخمس وهي الدين والحياة والعقل والمنكية والعائلة والتي نعتبر أنها أساس المشترك الديني بين كل الشرائع والبين لجميعها جات بالحظها ورعايتها كما نشترك على مستوى عش من مع أسائل البشرية في المشترك الإنساني الذي هو القيوم الكونجية التي لا تختفي فيها العقول ولا تتأثر بتاعب الزمان أو محد ذات البكان أو نوازع الإنسان إنها حقوق الطبيعية الفطرية التي يريثها كل إنسان بفاضي وجوده وهي حقوق إلهية مستر لأن ما حد للمؤمن وراء المؤمن قال تعالى ولقد كرمنا بني آدم وحملناه بالبري والبحر وفي هذا السياق أسترت وثائق لها وثها وهي مواثيق ووثائق تقوم على تثقيم مبادئ الكرامة للإنسانية فما تبعوه في وقت نفسه إلى مبادئ التسامح como السلم والرحمة والضامن وأثشوا بهالك لينا ويجب توازن من التسامح المهذب والحرية المسؤولية والموطنة الإيجابية والخصاد الإيجابي المتضامن ومن ذلك على سبيل المثال وثيقة مكرمة تاريخية ووثيقة أخوة الإنسانية ووثيقة كلمة السواء وكذلك الوثائق التي أسطرناها من تداة بُضعة للسلمة كوثيقة الحب الهضول وإعلانات براك وهاشط وابضعة أيها سادة الأجلة أن الانتقال بهذه المبادئ من حية التضوير إلى واقع التشديد أمر ممكن ومطلوب بحث لا تقم هذه الوثائق مشردة مبادئ نوارية من توت تفصيلة بالواقع لا فاعلية لها بل يشوب العمل وعلى ترجمتها وبرورتها لملائش عملية وبرامج تطبيقية تنزل في المدارس تعليباً للناس وفي المعابد لتعاليم المؤمنين وفي ساحة الصراع وبهادين النزائي طمنا تكن في النفوس وأبل يعمل الخلو إنما اعتقدركم اليوم مدعو لمتابعة نوادي بأفضل سبل لترعي جهود القيادات الدينية والخروج بخطوات عملية لتحقيق ذلك كما أن عقادها من تقع وبين اجتماع قمة العشرين التي تتطبق جمهورية واندرزها فرصة لصالح رسالة القيادات الدينية وفي الحاجة الماسة إلى تعزيز السلمة وأهم مخراجات متوتر إلى قادة الدول الكبرى مشاركتين في تكر قمة عام وفي سياق السلم أصبح دولةنا الإمارات العربية المتحدة فقيادة فصاحب السُّمُ رايسي الدولة الشيخ محمد زائد حبي الله مثابة للسلمة وما هو لموريد الخير حب احتضنت وثائق ومبادرات الحبار والسلامي وكانت أول دولة توشي بوزارة خاصة بالتسامح والتعال برجع لقمة تفسير من أحد المبادئ العشر عشرة رئيسية للستاتية الدولة في الخمسين سنة القادمة وختاماً أرجو أن يكون هذا الاجتماع بالقيادات الدينية على هذا المستوى الربيع إساماً في نجح السلام والوئام في العالم الأجمع متمنياً لهذا المتوتر النجاح والتوفيق والسلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته
Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, now we would like to invite His Grace Archbishop Henry Dukuba, Primate of the Anglican Church of Nigeria.
His Excellency, President of the Republic of Indonesia, Your Royal Highnesses, Revered Religious Leaders, and Leaders of Thoughts in our Communities and Countries All Over the World, permit me to stand on the existing protocol. We give thanks to God for such an opportunity to gather as religious leaders to consider the important place of religion in improving our human existence. I am speaking from Nigeria and I bring you greetings from brothers and sisters and the good citizens of Nigeria. I'm also speaking from the Anglican Church in which the Church of Nigeria Anglican Communion is one of the largest Anglican Communion provinces in the world as we serve more than twenty-five million regular worshippers and members. I'm also speaking from the Global South which is the epicenter of the growth of Christianity in our world today. And as we are here, in spite of all the challenges that are confronting us, many are turning to Christ Jesus. And yet, we are in the part of the world where we face much persecution, oppression, and afflictions. And in fact, Nigeria will be a test case for whatever we may decide in this conference. But let me start by bringing out two important foundational points. For us in Nigeria and in Africa, we take spiritual reality, especially in our materialistic world, very seriously. Africans are said to be very spiritually oriented and religious. And so we are. And across the religions in our continent, we share deep awareness that we live our lives in a world and we in a world that we did not create and with spiritual realities. We must take this into account. Secondly, it is our hope that as the leaders of nations that we have this moment and the privilege of political, economic, and other social influential powers to be able to change the narrative of humanity for good. And we want to thank God for this opportunity given to us. Another thing we want to stress is that service is at the core of life and leadership. Jesus twice said that He came not to be served but to serve and to give His life as a ransom for many. This also was emphasized by Archbishop, the Archbishop of Canterbury during his message at the funeral of the late Queen Elizabeth of England. People of love, of loving service are rare in any work of life. But leaders of loving service are still rarer. But in all cases, those who serve will be loved and remembered when those who cling to power and privileges are long forgotten. And loving and selfless service is at the core of who we are as Christians which is also common in our religious traditions. And as we may see, even as Christians in Nigeria, we are constrained by the love of God to serve and to help those that are in need. That even in the face of hardship, persecution, marginalization, and suffering, we continue to commit ourselves to dialogue, to loving, and to serving humanity and God. Service to God and humanity may be impeded by religious extremism, by any one religious community against others. And the challenge we have in Nigeria mostly as religious communities is the problem of religious extremism. You are not unaware of the challenges we face in our communities from religious extremism both now and as a result of such extremism in the past. We are speaking from the context of affliction faced by our Christian communities in Nigeria from terrorism and attacks. These attacks happen both in the northern, central, and other parts of Nigeria. And such attacks have ended up in terrorizing our communities, displacing local populations of Christians and communities so that they flee and leave their land and property. Christians in Nigeria since the beginning of our nation have persistently faced persecution, especially in northern part of Nigeria, and have learned to live with it. What has been of great concern in the past decade or more is the increasing attack, an all-out attack and violence against Christians and their communities since the year 2000. Especially as we see in the attacks of Bukharam, the radical Islamic sect in the northeast. And also the Al-Qaida sect and ISIL affiliates since the year 2009. And subsequently, the recent Islamic Hasma militia. Nigeria is now one of the most dangerous countries to be a Christian. Thousands of people have been killed by these well-organized, well-equipped, and well-funded extremists. And over one hundred and fifty towns and villages have been sacked. There are over two million internally displaced people and thousands more have been kidnapped for sex and ransom. Churches and poor families are now forced to pay millions of naira for their kidnapped relatives. And over a dozen citizens and pastors have been murdered. It's more than a dozen, in their hundreds. They have been murdered by these extremists. This is a cause, in addition to the hundreds of churches that have been attacked, bombed, and destroyed, we live there in great fear. But the most important issue is the way this has been interpreted. The real issue in this violence is not clash of tribes or issue of climate change as it is officially presented. This is genocide. It must be called by its name. What is most problematic in the current situation is that very few world leaders are willing to listen to the victims. Even when the United Kingdom All-Party Parliamentary Group on Religious Freedom reported that Nigerian Christians are facing genocide in increasing way. The Western nations and other governments insist that this is just a matter of tribal clashes between the pastoralists and the farmers, both fighting for scarce economic resources caused by climate change. Politically, this may sound politically correct, but this is a disinformation which aims to be a strategic way of pushing the real issues aside. And this may have been promoted by some of our Nigerian politicians and other groups who benefit from these undeclared massacres through various corrupt monetary and security and cells of arms and ammunition with which these heinous crimes are being committed. There is need for a change in our understanding of what we are suffering. Islamic groups have also carried out targeted killings in areas that have nothing to do with climate change factors. And people have suffered and families have been dismeted. What do Christians in Nigeria want? Christians in Nigeria simply want the killings to stop and for the victims of these violence to get justice. We have been working on rebuilding communities, developing educational institutions destroyed by these extremists, and providing food and medical assistance to the victims. We need you to join hands with us to rebuild our nation. We need you to help us to tell our stories. We have testimonies, facts, and truths about these events and happenings. We want to rebuild our communities and the global religious family. And as a religious global family, we need your prayers and also your support in helping us deal with these problems. As a result of religious extremism and an ever-increasing number of offenders, we those homeless people who have been driven out of their homes and farms and means of livelihood, we create more social and economic problems. Therefore, we ask at such a time as this that you come to our aid. The impact of these terrorist attacks. Number one, words and concepts are powerful. We have continuously seen that even children from childhood are taught and given words that are derogatory, name-calling to those who do not belong to their communities, including attacks even on moderate Islamic groups. Even in our world, even in our dialogues in seeking for good relationship, peaceful coexistence, we use words and concepts which do not hold the same meaning for all of us. Therefore, there is need for us to have words that are acceptable, concepts that can convey our meanings and actually what we want to discuss with each other. Secondly, the impact of what we are seeing is that we have much insecurity in our communities. Traveling in Nigeria is very dangerous with the ever-increasing risk of kidnapping and violent attacks. Thirdly, we have economic impact. Nigeria is a country with great natural resources that will be able to benefit not only our population but other countries. But it is held back from developing and sharing these wonderful gifts of God for the good of all by insecurity, uncertainty, fear, and distrust which is generated by religious conflict. What can this conference do for us or help us to achieve? Number one, one of the key aims of our gathering is to address and where possible, stop such outrages. We in Nigeria need the help of people of goodwill from all religious communities to stop the flow of arms and blood, stop the funding and other resources that empower the extremists. Secondly, here in Indonesia, you are committed to and practice religious pluralism and tolerance. Such an approach would be very beneficial to the global community, especially where religious extremism abounds. Living with and managing our religious and cultural diversities as a source of strength rather than a way that threaten our lives together in the society must be exploited and be made good use of. Therefore, we are looking forward to the outcome of this conference hoping that it will help us in living together and managing our religious and cultural diversities in Nigeria in such a way that this will be a blessing to our society rather than a cause. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, His Grace Archbishop Henry Dukuba, Primate of the Anglican Church of Nigeria. And now we move forward to our next speaker that will be Retired Reverend Yoshinobu Miyake, Chair of the Board International Shinto Studies Association from Japan. Please welcome Anoromo Yoshinobu Miyake.
Your Holinesses, Your Excellencies, Venerables, Eminence, Reverends, and Ladies and Gentlemen, Salaam apagii and Ashalam alaikum. Let me express my great joy and honor to have the opportunity to be here with you gathering from all over the world. It is my privilege to give my greetings at the opening preliminary session of the first annual R20 Summit. My name is Yoshinobu Miyake, a Shinto priest coming from Osaka, Japan. Shinto is the original indigenous religion of Japan. It is closely concerned to the traditional Japanese value system and the worldview and the behavior of most Japanese. Some might refer to Shinto as a natural religion because it is intimately linked to the respect for every aspect of our natural environment. Those who have visited Japan will know that our culture places a great emphasis upon respecting and preserving the nature environment and maintaining the harmony between human and nature. As may be seen in the more than hundred thousand Shinto shrines and eighty thousand Buddhist temples scattered throughout the Japanese art parado. Personally, I am a descendant of a long-lying Shinto priest going back my generations. My grandfather, the late Reverend Toshio Miyake, was a pioneer of interface dialogue which he initiated during World War II. In 1970, he established the organization such as known Religion for Peace. I am sure he would be pleased were he to witness the global initiative we are launching today under the auspicious Nafudatul Ulama, the government of Indonesia and Muslim World League. the government of Indonesia and Muslim world league. One-fourth of all human being is Muslim. Of all world Muslim majority nations, Indonesia is largest. I have high expectation of Indonesia's leadership in the Muslim world. For Indonesia, despite its Muslim majority is not self-righteous, rather it is tolerant of Hinduism, Buddhism, indigenous religions as can be seen here in Bali and provide model case for human society in the first 21st century. I know this from my personal experience having been a friend of Nahdlatul Ulama's former chairman and Indonesia's late president, Abdulrahman Wahid, who was a living example of the remarkable depths of the wisdom of Indonesian Islam. For several years, I served as the General Secretary of the G8, G7 Religious Leaders Summit. Hence, I have thought long and heard about the challenges facing humanity and the role of the organisations such as the G20, which represent 60% of world population and 90% of world GDP. To date however, intergovernmental bodies such as the G20 have proven incapable of preventing economic crisis and resolving the deep-seated conflict between East and West and between North and South, that means between developed and developing countries. Now is the time for world religious leaders to step forward, address these issues and resolve these conflicts. Terima kasih, syukurram, thank you.
Sang Egidio Community from Italy. Please welcome Dr. Valeria Martano.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, sahabat-sahabat terkasih. It's a honour to take the Floridas Summit that gathers in the frame of the G20, representatives of world religions, scholars, activists, to give voice to the concerns and hopes of many, each one of us according with our own traditions. And it's particularly meaningful that this summit is hosted by Indonesia, a nation that has placed Bineka tungalika, unity and diversity of faith and cultures as the core of its identity, a model of the civil coexistence. We stand in a dramatic historical passage in the midst of what has been defined as a polycrisis synthesised by 3C: Covid, conflicts, climate. We are facing three challenges: the multiplication of conflicts in various regions of the world and recently in the heart of Europe in Ukraine with the threat of a nuclear escalation; the disruption of ecosystems a result of the reckless exploitation of the resources of the mother earth, which generates not only poverty but also migrations, human trafficking, the onset of diseases and pandemics. What can religion say and do in the face of this polymorphic crisis? We are aware that religions do not have any political or economic power. They yet have enormous potential for pacification. Actually, to borrow the words of an Anglican theologian, Miroslav Wolf, that they are the original globalizers as they profess universal values and believe in a single human family. Actually, religions are not separate worlds from each other and from reality, but we are living organisms deeply connected with pains, expectations and anxieties of humanity. This makes us, as the great Catholic Pope Paul VI said, speaking for the first time at the United Nations Assembly in 1965, we are experts in humanity. Yes, we, men and women of faith, are experts in humanity. Compassion and mercy that are in the heart of every believer, whatever religion he or she may profess, make us challenged by poverty, by the suffering of the victims of wars or persecutions as we heard recently from the Nigerian bishop, from migrants, from prisoners. Their desperate cries claim peace. In 1986, sorry, Pope John Paul II, in the first meeting among religious representatives gathered by a Catholic Pope in Assisi, spoke of peace as a building site open to all, inviting not only specialists but all men and women to take part in it. The community of Sang Egidio, which I represent here, since that moment has multiplied its commitment at global level to promote the so-called spirit of Assisi. Our spiritual pillars, which can be summarised as prayer, prayer and peace, constitute an inclusive platform for its implementation. On this path, since 1990, Sang Egidio has established a privileged link with Indonesia. The late Abdulrahman Wahid Gustur, which I consider my mentor and guide, who defined himself a Gandhian Muslim, a man of peace and dialogue, embodied in those years the hope of a democratic and pluralistic Indonesia inclusive in its diversity. In the wake of Gustur, Indonesia has taken up the challenge of building itself as a pluralistic society. And Sang Egidio, thanks to the deep bond established with him, has developed over the years an intense collaboration with the great Muslims Association that represented backbone of Indonesian Islam, Nahdlatul Ulama and Muhammadiyah. Thank you. With whom we have made agreements that have produced concrete collaboration at national and international level. It's not possible in this contest to recall all the stages of this collaboration. I only want to mention the latest. Last June in Rome, Pak Yaya Hockel-Stakov, General Chairman of NU and the President of Sang Egidio has renewed an MOU that formalises the longstanding collaboration of the two institutions on issues of interreligious dialogue, humanitarian action and promotion of peace. The MOU starts a common commitment, I quote, “to cooperate both at the basic level and at the macro level to develop and implement strategies to facilitate conflict resolutions, reconciliation and peace, particularly in regions where religion teachings and identities are being weaponised to foster communal hatred, supremacy and violence.” And it foresees common action, particularly in the Middle East and in Africa, in Nigeria especially. In conclusion, today religions are much closer than used to be. Barriers of mistrust rooted in history have been broken down and cooperation between believers of different faiths is perhaps the greatest novelty of this century. A clear example is given by the document on Human Fraternity signed by Pope Francis and the Grand Imam Al-Tayyeb in Abu Dhabi in 2019. If the path taken so far has led us to understand the importance of shared values for the weaponisation of identities and for the progress of our civilizations, I believe that today is the time for a further step, for a commitment to strengthen multilateral cooperation platforms at regional and global level to imagine and implement concrete ways of cooperation in the field of peacekeeping, struggle against poverty, I finish, sake of the planet. May our shared values develop into a shared commitment in shared actions in a concrete practice of cooperation for world peace. Thank you, terima kasih.
Presentation. And now we would have the next and the final presentation of this plenary session. We would like to invite His Grace Archbishop Thomas Schimacher, Secretary General, World Evangelical Alliance from Germany. Please welcome Archbishop Thomas Schimacher.
It is a great privilege to bring warm greetings from the World Evangelical Alliance and our 600 million Christians in most every country in the world whom we represent and connect. May God bless you and give you the wisdom needed for all your responsibilities. Our team from the World Evangelical Alliance met in Jakarta with a team from the Nahdlatul Ulama three years ago to plan joint efforts to promote civilisation values as Christians and Muslims working together. We are people of goodwill. We do not want to use violence against one each other, but instead want to engage in rational discourse with each other and promote a free and just society in which we all can live. And I recall that at that time it even was said in the media that we fight for the freedom to do mission to each other while we are discussing because we want to know what the other one really thinks about. I grew up in Germany. At a time when our country was addressing problems and questions that now face our global society. We were not only dealing with our responsibility for the Nazi regime that had perpetrated the Holocaust and destroyed tens of millions of ordinary people, fifty million people were killed in the whole time. We were also painfully aware that in less than forty years our people had tried and were trying several radically different ways of organising society, at least three of them of which had strong ideological foundations. All three of these ideological ways of organising societies led to disaster. We had been until 1918, the German empire, led by a powerful Caesar, Kaiser, and our empire used religion to get power inside the minds of the people. During World War I, our imperial soldiers were belt buckles with “God with us” on their belt. And soldiers believed in that. This organisation of society combining an empire with religious ideology contributed to the death of millions. And the destruction was so extensive that some of those battlefields, and I lived close to this area, of a century ago are still off limits except for the one or the other scientist to study things there. The ideology of nationalism replaced the ideology of a German Christian empire, but it also was a religious ideology. It was filled with religious symbols and rituals while the party became a kind of big religious community. Sanpratis of the movement used Christian terminology to support Hitler. I wrote my PhD dissertation on Hitler's religion of war. A dysfunctional religion became an imperial ideology and this memory should haunt us forever. While then in West Germany, we were dealing with our responsibilities for those two ideological empires, our East German cousins were under communism. The communists primarily had Christianity and Judaism in mind when they called religion the opiate of the people. But of course they meant us all. Communism was so anti-religious that it became a religion itself. Its ideology remained many of us, reminded many of us of Christian theology, but with several themes turned upside down. It lived by an escatology. Many people, including some of my current friends, fled from East-West Germany to West Germany. This time, at least, the mess of forty years found a peaceful end. Our West German constitutional system of organising society is designed to prevent Dutch horrors in the future. But in an open, free society it is not possible for state officials to problem what the people will believe and have to believe and what values they have to follow. One of our High Court judges, Justice Ernst Wolfgang Böckenferde, typical German name you don't need to try to repeat it, Böckenferde summarised the issue well in what is called the Böckenferde dilemma. He declared, “The liberal secular state lives on the basis of propositions it cannot create and guarantee itself.” It lives on the basis of propositions which it cannot create and guarantee itself. What that means is a state can't problem and enforce a law that says murder is wrong. But the non-ideological state has no moral binding basis for the explanation which has to come from religion and from faith. In the Origin Conference of the WWA in London in 48, the eight hundred delegates from all over the world propagated the end of the horrendous evil of slavery. Many of our first leaders were leaders in the antislavery fight. Perhaps the most surprising speaker at the event was Reverend Madison Clark, black pastor of the African Methodist Episcopal Church in Washington DC. In our WWA history, we see especially three values of Prinsel that married a place in a global platform of civilisation values which we want to build up. Number one, humans have a unique God-given greatness which includes dignity and creativity which should not be touched. That is why we seek to help and respect people regardless of race, age, gender. We have to distinguish between what it means to be a human and other forms of creation. Second, humans possess a unique vulnerability. Nature can cause a hurricane, flood, earthquake. People can cause a Holocaust, senseless wars, genocide, sexual abuse, slavery. The first account of murder in the Bible is Cain killing his brother Abel, illustrating how our most human activity can become dysfunctional and unleash our vast vulnerability. illustrating how our most human activity can become dysfunctional and unleash our vast vulnerability. And we need to take this into account when building up a civilisation of values. And last, not least and very short, helpless people need very practical love from others to assure a life worth it. Böckenförde called our attention to his distinctive line in the preamble of our German constitution. It starts out, “In conscience of our responsibility before God and man.” It does not force anyone to believe in this, but it clearly says that whatever the state is doing, it has a layer behind it that is our responsibility whether the human dignity leads to values that make people living in our societies happy citizens who are happy that there are certain values and certain protections they have. And we are eager to cooperate with all people of goodwill and we believe that it is time for people of faith, of the religions of this world to stand up and say, “We stand up for civilisation, we stand up for specific values and for the protection of humans, of human dignity because everybody walking on this earth owes his life to God the Creator.”
Bishop Piero Piepo, Apostolic Apostolic Concierge to Indonesia, and then his holyness Swami Sri Govind Bhagiri Maharaj Trustee, Sri Krishna Jangbowie Trust from India, His Excellency Sir Dr. Shauqi Ibrahim Abdul Karim Alam, Grand Mufti of Egypt, Retired Reverend Yoshinobu Miyake, Chair of the Board International Shinto Studies Association from Japan, His Grace Archbishop Henry Dukuba, Private of the Anglican Church of Nigeria, Honourable Dr. Valeria Martano, San Egidio Community from Italy, and also His Grace Archbishop Thomas Schimacher, and would like to request Bapak Yahya Khokil Stakov to present a token of appreciation for each of our delegates to express our gratitude and appreciation for your presence and for your for your attention, thank you very much. After presenting the token of appreciation, we would like to invite Bapak Yahya Khokil Stakov to have photo session with all speakers on the stick. Thank you. We are proudly to inform you that Nahdlatul Ulama, NU, or NU, became the initiator and founder of G20 Religion Forum with the goal to overcome the religious problems and to develop partnership between the world religious leaders to ensure religion functions as genuine and dynamic solution in this 21st century. Ini adalah satu bukti nyata dan peran nyata dari Nahdlatul Ulama yang bertindak selaku initiator sehingga terwujudlah pelaksanaan G20 Religion Forum pada hari ini. Mohon untuk foto bersama terlebih dahulu Bapak Kyai Haji Yahya Khokil Stakov. Please give a big round of applause for the token presentation and also photo session and all events this afternoon. Thank you very much indeed for your presence and your attention. And we would like to invite you to Karang Asem Ballroom to have lunch break for approximately 40 minutes. And afterward, we would like to request you to return to this arena of discussion to continue our panel or our plenary session. Thank you very much. We hope that you will be back in this ballroom at 2:15 PM Bali time. Thank you very much and see you this afternoon. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Kami persilahkan Bapak Ibu untuk menuju ke Karang Asem Ballroom untuk menikmati hidangan yang tersaji dalam kesempatan santaps yang bersama hingga pukul 2 lebih 15 waktu Bali dan mohon kembali sekali lagi pada pukul 2 lebih 15 untuk melanjutkan acara plenary session. Selamat menikmati hidangan siang, please do enjoy your lunch, enjoy your food. And we’ll be right back on 2:15 this afternoon.